Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of April 21st of the San Bruno Planning Commission. I would like to just give a few reminders. First, if you can please turn off your cellphones for the duration of the meeting. Also, for those viewing, if you wish to hear the meeting over television, you can go to sanbrunocable.gov and pull up an agenda. And then the next reminder is just to let you know that these are televised on cable TV on Channel 1 and they will be replayed on Thursday, the following Thursday at 2:00. So roll call, please.
Commissioner Samut. President. Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
Chair Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Speaking directly into the microphone, here.
Commissioner Mishra.
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Chase will not be attending tonight.
And Commissioner Peterson, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the common people of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as it is.
The first item of business is to approve the minutes of the March 17th meeting.
Through the chair. I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the March 17th Planning Commission meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, the second please. Is there a second for?
Sure.
Second, okay.
Okay. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is Communications.
Just to repeat what you said before, we actually have the whole packet up online at sanbruno.ca.gov. You can go in the Community Development section and see all the staff reports and the agenda that we have here. Also, if people haven't checked it out at home, we also have all the old videos now online from the several last Planning Commission meetings. And we also have, we're also transitioning from Google to YouTube, so you'll see that the newer clips are on San Bruno's, San Bruno's own YouTube clips, so you could check those out there as well.
Thank you. Okay. And the next item is for anyone who's here, the items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, this is the time that you can come to the podium and speak. Seeing none, we'll close this portion of it. And the next is for the Commissioners, any conflicts of interest? The first item of business is 917 Masson Avenue, and it's a request for a use permit to legalize unpermitted construction that would result in an overall FAR above the .55 guidelines and exceeds the 44% lot coverage, which is a requirement of 57%, and exceeds a 2,800 square foot of living space without providing a third covered parking space per sections 12-200.030B.2 and 12-200.030B.3 and 12-200.080A.3 of the San Bruno zoning ordinance. Staff report, please.
As the written staff report notes, we are recommending continuation of this item. The applicant had to travel out of the country for an emergency, and so he requested a continuation of this item. So it would be heard at the May 19th, 2009 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion to continue?
Open.
Oh, thank you. The public hearing is now open. Welcome to step forward if anyone has any comments on this project. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to a motion for the Commissioners.
Through the chair. I move that we, I move that we continue the agenda items of May 19th Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, motion carried. The next item of business is 1701 Crosswood Drive. It's a request for a use permit to legalize the construction which increases the gross floor area by greater than 50%, cumulatively 92%. Exceeds the floor area ratio of 38.3%, which is proposed at 56.9%, and involves a third story addition per sections 12-200.030B.1 and 12-200.080B. of the San Bruno zoning ordinance. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Good evening. The item before you is a request for a conditional use permit to legalize construction that was completed without a permit at 1701 Crosswood Drive. As indicated in the staff report, the proposal increases the gross floor area by greater than 50%, exceeds the floor area ratio of 38.3%. You'll note that's a relatively lower floor area ratio, and that's due to this steep slope of the lot, and it also involves a third story addition. The home was originally constructed as a third story, as a three-story home at 1,765 square feet, and in 1990, the city approved an addition that brought the home to 2,847 square feet. The applicant constructed a 696 square foot addition to the home without the benefit of permits. And specifically, the applicant constructed a new entry foyer at the first floor, converted the original tandem garage to living space. On the second floor, added an addition to the living room, and that would be on the right side of that second story, just opposite the existing kitchen. And on the third floor, added a new family room as well as a new bathroom, and that would be located above that second story living room and above the second story nook. This project has been the subject of code enforcement since 2002. At this time, the applicant has agreed to rectify some of the illegal construction, and specifically, the applicant has agreed to remove the foyer that's on the first floor, convert the garage, the tandem garage space back to a two-car tandem garage, would like to legalize that second story living room addition, would also like to legalize the third story family room, and has agreed to remove the third story bathroom. Also, as indicated in the staff report, the applicant would be removing the stairs and the deck that are located to the rear of the site, and he's currently working with the Building Department on plans for the retaining wall, so that would be legalized as well. The Architecture Review Committee reviewed this item at its March 12th meeting and voted to favorable recommendation to the Planning Commission with all the conditions that are listed in your staff report. I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions, and the property owner is also here this evening if you have any questions for him.
Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Mr. Peterson of the evening.
Did he? Okay, sounded like your voice. Commissioner Mishra?
Thank you, Chair. My question is pertaining to Sheet A1. Under scope of work, it says, "Note, all constructions shall conform to 2001 California Building Code." I was wondering why that was 2001 versus 2007?
It has to be to 2007. That's just an error on the plans which will be corrected when it comes to the building side of things in the review.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
If the zoning requirements indicate a floor area ratio due to the configuration of the lot of .383, why is staff in favor of proposed conditions that provide a floor area ratio that's not quite double, but it's very high in comparison?
I think due to the unique size and shape of the lot and allowing the addition that was originally constructed, although illegally, does kind of fit in well with the house and the neighborhood. We did do a notice to the neighborhood, and we didn't express any, receive any concerns about it. So I think staff feels that the addition does fit in well, is really not out of character for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we will open the public hearing. The applicant, if you can please step forward. State your name for the record, please, and if you can speak directly into the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Mario Morales, and I'm a property owner of 1701 Crosswood Drive, and I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Through the chair.
Commissioner.
At Architectural Review, you gave us an idea of the timeline with the mudslide and stuff like that.
Yes.
It might be helpful to the Commission if you kind of told them what, how all that occurred.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that? I can hardly hear you.
During Architectural Review, you told us about the mudslide that happened behind your house and the repairs you had to make.
Yes.
So it might be kind of helpful for the rest of the Commission to hear that as well.
Yes, of course. Well, originally, when I bought the house approximately 15 years ago, the hillside was directly up against the building. And in a nutshell, I applied for a permit to do an extension off the back of the building, and I was allowed to build this extension into the hillside without any, any plans or any detailed information to restrain the soil back from, from the hillside. After the addition was built, I think it was about two years afterwards, there was a mudslide, and it went right through the building, and that happened twice. And so it was a serious problem, and I really tried to work through the insurance company and with the City of San Bruno, but it was really a very difficult process to try to get approval for the wall. And so when we submitted a survey, I had a, an engineer, soil engineer, conduct a survey of the, of the, of the lot and prepared a package of information that I submitted to the city. And, you know, it was just, it was really difficult, and I was led to believe that we could build the wall that is presently there on the property. I was led to believe that we could build a wall, and it would be okay with the city, strange as it sounds, but we worked there seven days a week till around 11:00 at night every day for about three months. We had to airlift heavy-duty equipment up onto the hillside because there's no way to get up there. And, you know, we worked night and day to restrain the hillside back, because I was afraid that the entire hill was going to come down through the property again for the third time. And so as we proceeded to do the work, you know, this sounds really strange, but the city officials came by and saw us doing the work. It was, it was almost impossible for them not to have seen the work. We had 16 wheeler trucks out in front blocking the roadway. We had backed up into the driveway. We had, you know, these huge forklifts lifting up these backhoes. We had, you know, these heavy-duty backhoes dumping dirt two stories down into trucks, and this went on for weeks on end. So I appreciate the opportunity to tell my side of the story, but that is how we came about doing the work on the hillside with the wall. I mean, it was really, I had no choice. The insurance company refused to help me, and I couldn't get anybody else to help me. And I spoke to all the neighbors, and all the neighbors were in agreement, and I submitted all these, these, I think it must have been 25 pages of a study that was done, and, you know, it was just the only thing that was left to be done. I didn't know what else I could do. Thank you.
Through, through the chair.
Let me just say, there is a different version of that story, and I don't think we need to go through all the details tonight, because what is before you is really the addition to the house, and the retaining wall is a separate structure. But from my viewpoint, and I appreciate that he may have a different reality about that, but the city expended, I mean, a great deal of financial and other resources, and this was a case that we brought to court in order to seek, in which we did obtain eventually an order in which he is required to make these changes. So if you'd like to, at some point, spend some time reviewing that, it tells a very different tale, and the bottom line is, the structure was, all the structures were done without the benefit of permits. And so what you're, what you have before you tonight is the first half of that, and that is the efforts to legalize the structure, which has been a very long time coming. The retaining wall is a separate matter, and we are hopeful that we're going to be able to work through the problems on the wall so that it can be made safe and eventually legalized, but there are a few hurdles yet to go there.
Thank you for the clarification, for the input. Are there any other questions of the applicant?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I heard your explanation about the wall, but was it, are you the party who actually built the house to be larger than was permitted?
Yes, sir, that's correct. I am a craftsman, I'm a carpenter, and I do this for a living. And again, I bought the home, it was a really very small home for my two, my two kids and myself, and we submitted permits for, I mean, plans for a lot of the work that was done there. And, you know, it just, I just wanted to improve it and make it a really very attractive home and comfortable for us, and we, you know, we just, I just kept on building, it was just one thing after another, you know, you just, you come home after work, you don't, I mean, I see something I don't like, and I just, you know, get busy working on it. I was just working seven days a week, every day. And so, but fortunately, and I'm grateful, that the city staff has approved the use permit for the property, and, and I appreciate the recommendation that the Commissioners will have before them tonight to review.
I was just wondering, as a carpenter, being in the industry, how it would escape you that a permit would be required for a larger structure?
Well, it didn't, to answer your question directly, it didn't escape me, and I had every intention to do everything according to code, but several years ago, before this new way of handling business in San Bruno, it was done differently, as I pointed out before in the past. Ralph Carrillo was the chief inspector of the City of San Bruno, and he was, you know, the only person really that you had to deal with in resolving issues concerning permits, work done without permits, and he came up to the house, we were doing the work, and also Bill Benavich was the other chief inspector at the time. And, you know, it was really very casual. It was very casual, and everything was okay, and it wasn't really a problem, and that's how things developed. And then, all of a sudden, it seemed like it happened overnight, this, this whole, it's a whole new way of doing business, you know? We have code enforcement now, we have all these things that didn't exist in the past when I bought the property, when I moved into the neighborhood. And so, you know, I pride myself in doing quality workmanship, and it was just really a quality job. It was just that, you know, with the addition that we built off the back of the, of the property, those plans and the micro filming of the, of the plans have disappeared. Fortunately, I think I have the only copy of my plan, of the permit, rather, that exists. There's not, that was all, I don't know what happened to it completely, I think when they moved from one location to another, I don't know what happened, but it completely disappeared. And I, you know, was a little upset about how things were handled, but at this point, I have agreed to work with the city and also with my architect. We have submitted a full set of plans, as you have before you, to try and put this behind us. It's been an incredible ordeal for me. You know, I'm financially broke, it's cost me thousands upon thousands of dollars, and to litigate this, I thought I had a legitimate claim, but the city has absolute immunity, and there's no, there's no way that there's any, I have no recourse, let's put it that way, I have no recourse at all. And so I, you know, accept the fact that I, I mean, I made mistakes, and I really want to just do the right thing at this point.
Thank you.
And I cannot, I'm just tired of fighting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Staff, do you have something you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, just quickly, I mean, I'd like to say that we obviously dispute the fact that things were done that way, as Mario was claiming, but beyond that, where I do agree with Mario is, is that going forward, he has now made the step, he's turned in quality plans, staff taking aside that it was done via code enforcement, we are in support of this application, he is headed in the right track, and that's why we're recommending approval, because of the addition as it's built and as it's proposed, as it's proposed in these plans, will fit into the neighborhood, and he's turned in quality plans. So we are looking forward to a successful ending to this, to this journey.
Are there any other questions of the applicant?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Samut.
Have you read all the conditions of approval on this?
Are you asking me to read this, sir? Yes, uh-huh. Yes, actually, I did, I had, I did read them, yes. I finished it before we.
Are you in agreement with them?
Let's see. Did you find something out of the ordinary there that you felt that you wanted to bring to my attention?
No, I'm simply asking you a yes or no question. Did you, have you read all of them?
Yes, I did.
Are you in agreement with all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you. If you'd, if, you may take a seat now, please.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else would like to speak on this project? Please state your name and, and your, and your address for the record.
I'm the chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Patrick Mora, architect, 115 Valencia Street, San Francisco, and I'm here representing Mr. Morales on this project. Basically, Mr. Morales has shown good faith in trying to resolve the items on his property, and we have gone through incredible somersaults to provide these drawings that show three phases of the work, the existing, the added portion with a, with a permit, and then the new, without a permit. So it was confusing, but I think the drawings depict what is there, and Mr. Morales has, like I said, very good faith, he has repented on his work with that permit, and he's willing to do anything now to resolve it. There are many problems on him right now, and I am here to help him, and I am asking the Commission to please make a decision and help him too.
Thank you for your point of view, Mr. Morales. I just want to comment to you that we're not here to really discuss about good faith or not good faith, it's really to legalize the construction that was not in compliance. And so, thank you for your comments, and, and we will certainly take into consideration to do the appropriate.
Thank you.
Decision. Are there any questions for the speaker?
I'm the commission.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that wishes to speak on this project? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and go back to the Planning Commission discussion. Did you want to speak during the public hearing?
Yeah, one question. We found, we found an, and typo and error in condition number six. It says, "It should state, 'The residence shall be used as a single-family residential dwelling only,' instead of dwelling unit with an excess housekeeping unit." So strike with the excess housekeeping unit on that.
Mr. Morales, did you understand that piece of it?
Yes, I really have.
Okay. I just want to be sure that, that you heard that piece of it.
What is an excess housekeeping unit? I think.
The question is from the applicant, is what is an excess housing unit? So our planning department director?
It would have been a second unit within, a legalized second unit within the home. I think that was left over from a previous application that had a legal second unit in it.
Okay. Are you clear with that, Mr. Morales?
Yes, I am. I'm not in opposition.
Thank you. The public hearing is now officially closed, and we'll bring it back to planning discussion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I have two questions for staff, who is in excellent humor this evening, I see, as usual. This, this is a steep hillside, and it's a pretty big floor area ratio, and two things come to mind because of that. Number one, I would like to ask, would it be reasonable to add to the condition 16 about stormwater to indicate that an engineer shall make a stormwater study to ensure that stormwater is diverted from uphill down to the street level expeditiously? If this starts soaking up water, that's, that could be a hazard and be a shame to do, to do all this work and just have it washed away.
The answer to that is they are already doing drainage calculations related to the retaining wall, and actually, one of the improvements that's having to be, that's having to be done to the retaining wall is drilling weep holes in there to ensure proper drainage. And he does have a, he does have a licensed engineer on board, and it's also being reviewed by our peer engineers to make sure all the drainage is done correctly.
Well, I wish you good luck.
It's, yeah, it's been a, it's been a challenging one, but we have gotten to the point where it's engineered well with some corrections.
And the second thing is, although the wall isn't part of this permit, somehow I have a feeling that it might be appropriate to condition that the wall be resolved before the permit construction goes forward. In other words, if you do all this construction and then do the wall secondly, there may be a conflict.
You know, I would say, we're doing it concurrently, we're under a court order in terms of how we're processing the permit, so we're having two concurrent permits. He's resolving the addition at the same time as he's resolving the retaining wall, so we already have that as part of the court order, how we're processing the retaining wall.
Would it be fair to put a condition in that recognizes this linkage between the two events?
That might not be a bad idea. Let me think about it for just a moment, but the key thing that you should be aware of is that until the retaining wall is resolved and fully made safe, then there, nobody can live in the house. Nobody's actually, there's a, it's red tag.
It's red tag now?
Until it is made safe. Now, that's a different issue than whether it's fully legalized, because there are some encroachments onto neighboring properties.
Right.
And that's something that he's going to have to work out with the property owners, but the city's primary concern will be the safety of the wall. I don't think it would be wrong to just have a, some sort of notation that there is a, that there's a relationship or there's a concurrent process going on dealing with the retaining wall. I don't know that it would be in the condition of approval, but in maybe one of the more descriptive part of it.
Possibly, we could add it to one of the findings, some type of wording to the findings that it's going to be processed concurrently.
Okay, I just look for something, because when something is so clearly related, it would seem important to have it either in findings or conditions someplace. And, I mean, just looking at that wall, it, being an engineer, it doesn't look good.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Mishra.
Would it be okay to add that condition to, say, the final inspection or passing of the final inspection? As part of gaining occupancy?
In terms of, since the addition itself is on the table, not the, and not the retaining wall, but in general, due to the court order and due to the red tag we have on the building, he's not going to be able to live in the main home or the addition to the home until he takes, until the retaining wall is taken care of.
Right.
So we already kind of have that built into, into the court order and to how we're processing the permit.
Through the chair.
I'm sorry, and just, just to be clear, that's to when the retaining wall is made safe. Once it's made safe, the red tag comes off, because, and then there'll be a separate issue of the ability to legalize it, given the encroachment onto the neighboring properties.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Let me ask this of the attorney, then. When there's a permit that's so strongly linked to another permitted structure on the property, wouldn't it be appropriate to have something in here, condition-wise? I'm not sure what, but it just seems to be odd to have a permit that's essentially tied to another permit, and there's no recognition of it in the document.
I mean, I think your point is very well taken, and I think that the place where that acknowledgement is in the findings of fact that probably need to be added here to describe what the situation is on the property. But in terms of the permit, I would handle those as two separate matters, one dealing with the structure itself, and it would be wonderful if we're able to achieve that point where that piece of it is legalized and just have the separate remaining piece which has its own challenges. And as I described, that's, that's a two-part deal that has to occur. One is the safety modifications need to be made, the weep holes, and hopefully, that will then make the structure safe such that the red tag could be lifted, but the permit for that, the city cannot authorize the granting of a permit that, where the structure encroaches onto somebody else's property. So Mr. Morales is going to have to work very hard to get the appropriate permissions. permissions on that, but I do think that the situation should be acknowledged in the descriptive part of the document.
Okay, I appreciate that, I just have this sense of it coming back to adversely affect the city if there's some, a strong link and it's not acknowledged. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, I just have a question for you as well, you indicated there's some encroachment into the neighbor's property, now, and that's an issue between the owner and the neighbors, is that something that would, that has any reflection or anything that comes back from a planning commission point of view or decision-making?
No, this is purely an engineering component, and a review of the wall for that purpose, so the, the encroachment onto the neighboring properties doesn't become an issue before you, but the city can neither authorize the removal of the encroachment or the legalization of that part of the wall, absent the property owner's consent.
Okay, thank you.
So hopefully, he'll be able to get that.
Through the chair, just, the encroachment, the encroachment on the neighbor is all on the wall, nothing to do with the structure of the house?
It's my understanding it's the wall.
Okay, so, nothing we're doing, not, tonight is talking about the encroachment?
No, if, if, if there was any belief on any of our parts that there was an encroachment of the structure of the house, then that would have had to be addressed in order to get before you, because the city could not recommend that be legalized.
Through the chair, isn't the, aren't the stairs, part of the stairs and the deck that's going to be removed in encroachment?
Correct, and those are, those are, those are shown as to be demoed, so he's going to have to remove those.
Okay, so it's more than the wall?
It's just being, though, I guess the, to the nuance of this, that the wall's the only thing he's proposed to remain in the plans, everything else is going to be demolished.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other questions? Bring it back to the planning discussion. Motion?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Marshall?
Nobody wants to talk, I'll make a motion that we approve use permit 0815 based on findings, facts, one through six, and conditions of approval, one through twenty, and are we adding a condition of approval with the new verbiage, what Commissioner Peterson wanted, or is that the findings and facts, or?
I think we were just adding finding and fact to describe the relationship between the-
So we're adding one finding and fact?
Yeah.
So it'd be one through seven, and conditions of approval, one through twenty?
Yeah, modify condition six to strike the excess housekeeping.
Okay, one.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There is a seven-day appeal notice on this process? Ten days, I'm back in the olden days, ten-day appeal process. Okay, thank you. The next item of business is 195 El Camino Real, it's for a request for a use permit to allow a dental office in a neighborhood commercial zone per section 1296, 100, C3 of the San Bruno zoning ordinance. Staff report, please.
Thank you, good evening. This application is for a use permit to allow a dental office in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. The property is six, I'm sorry, 3,000 square feet, the building is 1,344 square feet, and there are four existing parking spaces. The building currently is in good condition, it has a newer awning over the entrance, and some potted plants in the front, there are not really any other opportunities here for any kind of landscaping. The applicant does plan to replant those pots prior to business operation, and that is included as a condition of approval. This project requires a use permit because dental offices are a conditional use in the neighborhood commercial zoning, so that's why it's before you tonight. The applicant has described that they would like to have three employees, that includes the dentist, and two patients at a time at the property. They propose hours of operation from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., up to six days a week, so as we can imagine, there may be some flexibility in that time, since dental offices are not normally open that full-time, but they would like to have that range available to them in their approved hours. The applicant has indicated that they specifically chose this location because of its proximity to public transportation. Dr. Lim is in contract to purchase the building pending the approval of the conditional use permit, so he will be the property owner. He has also noted that at his other office locations, which he's had several on the peninsula, he finds that many of his patients take the bus to the dentist, and so this location was specifically interesting to him, and it has a bus stop right out in front. As you know, there's also significant residential population within good walking distance of this location on El Camino. So staff does support this needed medical service at a location where there are those transportation options. In regards to the conditional nature of it in the commercial zoning, so we're looking at some of the surrounding uses to ensure that it would be compatible with those surrounding uses, and as you probably know, in that immediate area, there's a couple of different types of retail establishments, flower shop, liquor store, there's a restaurant next door, a hotel across the street, and so staff does find that this use will be compatible with those surrounding uses in the area. Also, just to note, the parking at this location is legal non-conforming, so it's grandfathered in, and so it is just slightly deficient, and at this location, you do have to back out onto El Camino, but that's existing with the site, and so that's not under review this evening. So staff recommends approval of use permit 09003, there's a typo in the staff report, but the use permit number is 09003, subject to conditions of approval, one through thirteen, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Sumut?
I have a commission, I have a question for Ms. Thompson, I'm looking at the plans, and it seems like the entry is not ADA accessible. How do we proceed? I, I know that this is just a use permit question, but I would rather address the-
Sure. All those, all ADA issues are addressed during the building division, the tenant improvement review stage, I don't know the specific amount that they're doing in terms of the tenant improvement amount, but that will, that will give direction to what ADA improvements will have to be made.
With the standard?
It's a standard, yeah, it's a standard, California, I mean, everyone within California, it's the same.
In past times, during discussions, we've really gone into a lot of details, but now that things have been very standardized and very specific, we almost take for granted that that's the case, so.
Yeah, and our, and our building official is really on it, I mean, he really understands ADA issues and how they're applied to individual projects, so.
Thank you.
And through the chair. We did receive some preliminary comments from our plan checker in regards to ADA issues at the site, I have already shared those with the applicant, and they are not included in the plans that are in front of you, since they'll be implemented with the building permit, and so we have made him aware of a few of those issues.
Good, thank you. Any additional questions for staff? Thank you. We'll officially open the public hearing, and the applicant can please stand at the podium, and please let us know your name, give us a description of your project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Wilson Lim, dentist by profession, I came to this country in 1984, and been working at UCSF as a dental assistant, with a faculty practice on pediatric dentistry. I got my license in 1989, and opened my own business 1990, 91, in Daly City, which Ms. had described the place, my patient all bill with the public transportation, a few feet from the office as a terminal of a munibus, and Santram Bus is a few feet away also has a bus stop, and we have the Daly City Bark Station with the use of a bus-bark system, and not to consider, there's a lot of meter parking around, and from that time on, I continue, I buy, build offices for like five, six, four, five offices around the Bay Area, and with regards to this 195 properties, I look at it and have been interested of putting another dental office, because of the availability of the bus parking in between two bark stations with the same process of bark-to-bus system, and Coltrane's there, not to consider the public parking, and besides, it has a big space, probably owned by the others, a restaurant that is there, that I probably in the future, if need one, could try to negotiate with the restaurant owner, so, and the building itself is access for disabled, I only have to do is half of the office to turn into a dental operatories, plan is three operatories, and with one doctors, one assistants, and one front desk, and, and it has availability of four parkings, which one is dedicated for disabled, in front of it has a ram for disabled people, and actually, the whole building is equipped with a disabled access.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions for the applicant? There are none? Thank you, sir, you may have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this project? There are none, we'll officially close the public hearing, and bring it back for discussion from the commissioners. Is there a motion?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Sumut?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we approve use permit, wait, this is wrong, right, 0900, zero, is that right? 003? 09003, based on findings, fact, one through three, and, and conditions of approval, one through thirteen.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So there is a ten-day appeal process. Thank you. Next item of business is city staff discussion.
The monthly selection for the May 14th architecture review meeting?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I'd like to volunteer, Kevin, for the next architectural review committee.
The, are we trying to, there was an item, 101 Lake was an item that was on a architectural review agenda last month, and it was one that was sent back to the architectural review committee to serve some major revision, revisions, so we were hoping, we were hoping to have the same architectural review team again there to review it, for consistency reasons, so we give you the night off, Commissioner Peterson, if Commissioner Biassati, Sumut, and Chase, I heard him just say he wants to do it, so we'll have-
Is that 101 or 103?
Uh, 101.
101, okay.
Google calendar?
Okay, and Peterson will be our, our backup.
Yeah, fine.
Any additional discussion from the commissioners? There are none, the meeting is adjourned.
I, I'm sorry, I, one thing I don't think we've had is that the, the general plan was approved since the last, it was approved on March 24th, so we officially have our 2009 general plan now.
Yay, congratulations.
Cool.
Okay, there are no other comments or discussions, I'll officially close the adjourned meeting.